Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of January 9th, 2024. We call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. If we would all rise for the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is the Hazen Production Plan. Discussion with Serped, but I believe that they will not be in attendance this evening.
Yes, casualty of the storm. It's a long story. I don't want to get into somebody's flooded basement, but the casualty of the storm.
Wow. All right, so we will continue that to...
Yes, I checked to see if they were available for 1:23, and I thought that the best date, considering that the meeting after that were likely to be open, the hearings for zoning articles for town meeting.
Excellent. Our next order of business is a discussion on the Plymouth Airport expansion. Do we have anybody here? Good evening, gentlemen. I'm going to ask you to pull the microphone down and towards you for our minute taker. If you could just identify yourselves for her also.
Good evening. My name is Ken Fostick. I'm chairman of the Plymouth Airport Commission. With me today, tonight, are Doug Krishati, who's the vice chair, Paul Worcester, both on the commission, and also Ed James, who's our Carver representative that attends our meetings and reports back. And sitting with me is Matt Cardillo, who is the airport manager. We met with Tom a few weeks ago now, and we had the discussion. I want to, I know you have a very busy agenda, so I want to answer your questions and be to the point. So we're, we're going to explain what's going on with, as is described here, expansion. The FAA requires, if you are going to ask them for capital, that you have a master planning process. And every 10 years, they go through this process, and they develop their, how they're going to fund projects based upon all of those master plans. So two years ago, we started to revise our, or update, I'm sorry, our master plan. And what the, the capital expenditures that the FAA spends is for airport runways, taxiways, and navigational aids. We also do the same thing for the state of Massachusetts for the aeronautics division. So one of the items that's on our master plan is that the runways, per FAA regulations, just like roads, get redone every 20 to 25 years. So we have a runway that is scheduled to be re-redone. When I say redone, they don't just put new pavement over the top of it. They tear the whole thing up and put, rebuild it, the whole runway. We are not changing the type of runway we have. We are not changing the classification of the airport. It is still a B2 airport. So that signifies the amount of weight that the runway can bear and the width of the wings of the airplane. So we're not, none of that is changing. So, but we were taxed with updating that plan and telling them how we're going to improve things. How, what do we, what do we want to do here? How are we going to improve safety? How are we going to operate over the next 10 years for their funding process? So we looked at that, and we said, we, first of all, we announced to the Carver Planning Board, the Plymouth Planning Board, and then in the newspapers when we had held meetings, that we were going to review some options on what we would do. It would make sense at this point, when the runway is being redone, if we were going to make any changes to that runway, we would do that at this point. So we started this process and held meetings. So I'm going to ask Matt to run through a few slides here quickly and describe what that process was.
Okay, yeah, so thank you again for having us. I don't know if you, I, I've been with the airport for eight...
Matt, if you would just introduce yourself.
I apologize, yep. So I've been with the airport for about eight and a half years. Tom retired about a year and a half ago, so I don't know if I, I don't think I've ever met any of you, but if you had met Tom before, I, I replaced him, but I worked under him for about seven years. So thank you for having us, and yeah, I'll just go through these slides really quick. So as Ken was touching upon, the, the master plan update, we had four separate meetings for that. January the 13th of 2022, April the 7th of 2022, the 21st of July in 2022, and then March of 2023, we had four separate meetings. Each one of those meetings, the first was more of an introduction, this is what the master plan is, or the, a technical master plan update, and this is what we are probably going to be tasked with doing. Second was a presentation of the findings of the master plan, and the second, the third and the fourth were discussions of runway length, the runway length analyses, and then the fourth meeting was essentially the, the commission deciding on which runway length they were going to ultimately go with. So as Ken said, there was a meeting with the Carver Select Board on the 15th of February of 2022. And then out of the technical master plan came an environmental assessment, and we just had that meeting this past November with the public to discuss the environmental assessment that was ongoing at the time. And the comment period was open, which had just actually closed yesterday after, there was, there was an extension from December into January for that. So I'll go really quick over, like Ken was saying, that technical master plan, there was a lot more than just the runway expansion, but we're just focusing on that runway expansion as of right now. So there were four alternatives that the engineer had come up with. When they engineered this, they're engineering it for the aircraft, the design aircraft, which is a Falcon 2000. And when they say the 850-foot extension, which is the alternative, alternative number four, that's the unconstrained length for that aircraft. And then, so there are four alternatives. The first is a no build, which is always an alternative. Second was a 351-foot extension. Alternative three was a 550-foot extension, and then alternative four was an 850-foot extension. So the commission had multiple meetings, again, with, with the public and with our engineers and just commission meetings, and ultimately had come down to the decision that they were, because of the impacts to the, the surrounding butters and with the 850-foot extension, there was actually going to be some wetland intrusion, not on the airport, on the runway side, but the access road that actually goes around the backside of the airport would be, need to be relocated and would be in a wetland, so they decided not to go with that. So ultimately, they've tasked the, the environmental assessment was tasked with the 351-foot extension. And at this point, I'll go over kind of what that 351-foot extension looks like. So this is the west side of the airport, so it is on the Carver side of the airport. As you can see there, that gives us the 351, 351-foot extension, and then those blue and green are kind of these, we call them invisible surfaces that have to be clear from debris, or not debris, but obstructions. And then this one ultimately just talks about, there's a single obstruction. It is a mature pine tree that is growing there, and we have, I believe the, our engineers have looked at it and analyzed it, and it is mature, and it won't be growing any further. As you can see, the, that bottom right vegetation penetration key, it's not, actually, it's yellow, it's within 10 feet of being a penetration. If it was red, it would have to be removed, but as they have, they said, as they have said, it is mature and won't grow any further. So that had the, the least amount of, we wouldn't have to get any navigation easements or anything like that, where the 300, or sorry, the 550-foot and the 850-foot extensions would have required some navigation easements with the butters and, and such. So I think the commission ultimately came down to a plan that is mutually beneficial for the, the airport as well as the surrounding community. So I don't know if you wanted to catch, touch on anything else, Ken, but...
So we, what we had to do was take into consideration the safety, safety items and what we could get done at that time, and what was the least obtrusive to the Carver community and the Plymouth community. So this represented the best alternative as far as we were concerned. We, in our meetings, met with South Meadow Village at one of their meetings, one of their annual meetings, I think it was, and we reviewed all of these, and, you know, it, it appears to be the best possible alternative for us. The environmental protection, the environmental assessment program includes other items that we intend to do over the next X number of 10 years, or, you know, hopefully sooner. We have a wastewater treatment plant that there isn't, there are no septic systems on the airport. It all goes into the wastewater treatment plant. We have had development on the south side of the airport, so we need to improve the, the piping of the sewage treatment plant over on that side. So that's going to tear up the road and put up, put in a drainage pipes in there. So that's included in there. We also anticipate that we will have further expansion of buildings, and actually on the Carver side, do we have one that goes back further? So we anticipate that there will be future development in that area, and those, that happens to be on the Carver side for additional hangers. We don't have them right now, but we have people who are speaking to us about that, so...
There's room for about, I'd say, four or five of those hangers, and they're generally 100 by 100 or 150 by 150, so it gives you an idea of the square footage and the taxable.
I would just also point out that the economic impact of the airport, we have over 300 employees on the airport, some $60 million in payroll for people who live and work in Plymouth and Carver and southeastern Massachusetts. Over 600,000, 600,006, let's put that in the right numbers, $600 million of economic impact on the southeastern area. We have the Massachusetts State Police Wing there. We have MedFlight there. We have, we have Cape Cod Community College has a program for training young mechanics, train over 200 mechanics a year. It's a, it's a very vital organization, it's a very vital place, and so we, we try and walk the line. We, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be responsive to our community, and we're charged with running the airport in the best possible way we can. So at this point, I, do you have any questions?
The dotted lines up there, is that the lot lines, property lines?
That, that is...
Which ones are you looking at, the...
It, it forms like a...
That's actually the approach.
Yeah, those are, that's the runway object free zone, so that's not, none of the, this is all topography and kind of those zones that...
You, you see the line that's diagonal in the right corner?
Yes.
That's the Carver line.
Okay.
I believe that's the Carver line.
Yeah, the, the dash with the, the long, yeah, that's the Carver line, kind of where that second C arrow points.
Okay, all right. So what we're looking at is the Plymouth side?
You're looking at the Carver side. This is the west side of the airport. So that, that road on the top there is South Meadow Road.
Yeah.
And that's Gate 6 right there. That, that surface road right there is Gate 6.
Have you readjusted your stormwater containment plan in regards to extending the runway and more impervious surface?
Yes.
Excellent.
This, this is all high land. It's actually very high, but yes, that's all, all in the plan.
And you've taken into consideration with any, your waste management in regards to adding new hangers and such?
Correct.
Excellent.
The, the capacity of the plant is approximately 50% right now, so...
Excellent.
The, your runway approach lines, how far is that, where exactly is that going to...
Those are those dots in the...
Right, where are they going to end up?
They will move 300 feet further, further, right.
I get that, but I can't tell what 300 feet is.
So can you see that, the, the access road there that comes off of South Meadow?
Matt, you might want to use the cursor on your laptop.
It's not, it's not showing up. I have it, I have it here, but, oh, sorry. I just changed it. So that road that comes and kind of goes 90-90, that last light's going to be just beyond that road right now, and as of right now, that, that last light's essentially where the second to last light is right now. A little bit, a little bit further, that, that second to last light's a little bit further east, but...
Right, that's where the runway is going to extend to?
The runway, the, the, I, that dot right there is the runway, the...
What it's going to extend to?
No, no, I think the A, the A-frame that's at the top there is the extension.
Yeah, that's the 351. Where the, those that kind of look like piano keys, piano keys and the six, that's the only area that's expanding. So then, like Ken was saying, all the lights will just move 351 feet from their current position as well.
Okay. Now, is that going to cause any issues with regards to that paved road and people coming in?
It does not.
No, it doesn't.
Not, not an issue for the...
Correct.
Okay, great. And is this going to, are you guys anticipating using, bringing in larger aircraft?
No.
Different types of aircraft?
No. Again, because it's a B2 airport, it, it says that you can only bring in certain types of airplane, that had the weight, the wingspans, et cetera. We do not anticipate any change in the type of aircraft we have there. And over the past, well, over the past 10 years, the, the numbers of operations, meaning landings and take, takeoffs, have remained stable. They haven't increased, they haven't, they've actually decreased by a small amount. And the mix has changed just a little bit. We do a lot of training. We still have a lot of, of training operations there. So we have a number of small airplanes, but we have, we're now seeing a few more jets. But the jets are, they've improved dramatically, they're much quieter, and so the mixture really hasn't changed a whole lot. We don't anticipate it's going to change going forward either. People come to Plymouth for a reason, and they, they come to this area, come to Carver, wherever, and that, those, that hasn't changed. They, they don't come just because we did something at the airport. They come for a reason, and the reasons exist now, have existed and still exist. So, you know, we, we don't anticipate any major changes to that.
How many aircrafts actually come in and out daily? Is there an average?
Yes. So generally, we go by like annual numbers generally, because it's very seasonal, but it's about 60,000 movements, so a movement is either a landing or a takeoff, so it's 60,000 movements a year. So obviously, in the summer, it's a little bit more. In the winter, it slows down. It averages out. I can't do that math really quickly in my head, but probably like 150, I have to, let me do that really quick, I apologize.
A little over 1,000 a week, about 1,100, 1,125 a week.
Yeah.
It varies, you know, and any, any given day, it varies dramatically, you know. Obviously, in the middle of a storm, there's very little traffic. Recently, we had a couple of really beautiful days on a weekend, and we had, they had forecasted that the weather was going to be bad, and it was. It was foggy and miserable and whatever, and came to Christmas. So we had an extremely busy day, one day. But it's, it's varies, the, the numbers in total come out the same, but the, it varies dramatically by the weather.
Interesting. Thank you.
All right, so this isn't really going to change the, the residential crash zones, the, I live by, I lived near an airport at one point in time, and there was, they, we were informed of, I guess there's, there's certain areas where planes come in and out of, where possible crashes could happen, and that we were warned of those areas, that, that our house resided in one of those areas. Obviously, a crash would happen. Something like this is not going to change those zones any...
No, it will not.
Significant that we would have to include any new residents?
Correct. It, the approach to the airport and takeoff from the airport, that's that blue area there, that, that remains the same, because the, the runways aren't changing in direction, so it's that same corridor that goes through.
Yeah, just thinking of the, with the extension, if there's going to be, anybody else that's going to be added to that?
If it did, well, by 351 feet, that would be it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this might be a question of Mr. Bott, but are, are we intending to have our engineer look at this, or have they, have you sent plans for our engineer to go over and look at?
No, there really isn't any role in Carver for this. The, essentially, extending the pavement doesn't meet any thresholds for review here. I don't know what the permitting is in Plymouth, if there is site plan review in Plymouth for something like this, but our threshold here, there, there isn't one. I think that some of the pavement is also coming out, in addition to pavement that you're putting in.
Correct. Those, it's where the hash marks, that's coming out. But we, we will share any of the plans with you. It's, they're still, quite frankly, in the development section. We, we have to go through the environmental assessment. The FAA hasn't agreed on it yet. They've led us to believe that it's acceptable, but they haven't agreed on it. So some of the planning for waste, for the runoff water, surface water and stuff, that's still being developed right now, because they haven't issued the money to go through that planning. In this project, we don't anticipate is going to happen for another two years.
Excellent.
Well, two annual, you know, because the, their planning, the town's planning is, is off, it's not, it's not a physical year, it's not a, it's otherwise. So it's about a year and a half, let's say, away. Okay.
I see a lot of people in the audience. Does anybody have a question? I don't see any hands raised. So I want to thank you for coming here this evening and presenting this to us, and keeping us informed and knowing what's going on, so thank you very much.
Like Ken said, we're, we're happy to answer any questions. You can reach out to myself. If you have any questions for Ken, I can get them to Ken and, and either go through Tom or, or myself, and Tom, if anything comes up, we'll get it to you as well.
We do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Route 44 Development LLC requesting a definitive subdivision approval entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan for Route 44 Development LLC, Route 44 Commerce Park pursuant to the Carver subdivision control law for property located at Off Green Parkway formerly known as Montello Street. Assessors MAP 20 lots 2, 2-1, and 14, and MAP 22 lots 3, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3-1, 4, 5A, 10, 10-1, and 11 in Carver, Mass, showing four proposed non-residential lots in the Green Business District. Good evening. We received a lot of information this evening.
Good evening. Zach Richards with Bowler Engineering, representing the applicant, Route 44 Development. And with me tonight is Alex Horgan from Bowler, as well as Susan Murphy with Dane Torpe to help answer any questions that might arise. As the chair mentioned, there's been a little bit of back and forth as recent as today with regards to the peer review, as we've been working hard since the last hearing to, to wrap that review up. So there was some supplemental documentation received from the peer review consultant this morning, really just two minor outstanding items that we then addressed by the early afternoon, and I'm happy to talk to those in a little more detail. First, hoping to just run through some of the, the updates. I'll try to keep it pretty brief, but I think there's some, some good feedback that came out of the peer review, as well as comments from the board that we've heard at, at prior hearings, that's worth just kind of hitting on a high level here before we jump into any questions, comments. Again, just reminder of the project history, which we filed the definitive subdivision back in October the 17th. We were at the Planning Board hearing before the holiday break on December 19th, running through some of, some of the items that we, we heard questions on, including the lighting and some of the landscaping features. We then worked diligently over the holidays break to, to respond to the, the peer review letter that was received in December, and then formally responded with updated plans and a couple other materials on January 4th. And then, as I mentioned, we did hear back from the peer review consultant, Fosse and O'Neil, this morning with their final review letter with just two minor, really cleanup items that were requested and some conditions that were, that were proposed, or, or, I guess, agreed on the approach, agreed upon by the, the peer review consultants. So here we are tonight at our third planning board here, planning board hearing. Just a reminder, this is the, the overall subdivision plan that's being, that's in front of you, creating four buildable lots, one through four, two drainage parcels, A and B, and then an open space parcel, which is in the upper left-hand portion of the site, mostly cranberry bogs. As, as some of the feedback we heard from the board was a request to show the environmental capped area, which we've outlined in blue on this exhibit, but that's been, been added to the plans as requested. We, we heard some feedback and requests to clarify the, some of the trucking or, or access to the site, truck routes and, and circulation, so we did prepare and submit this exhibit as part of the peer review response. And you can see, we kind of have two different colors, reds incoming traffic coming from either direction of Route 44 into the site via Green Parkway, making lefts into the existing access drive and, and, you know, constructed drives, once, once those are, you know, constructed such that they might be utilized to, to continue construction, and then taking rights out of the site, back down Green Parkway and Main Street to Route 44. So that is something that the applicant has agreed to.
If I could just interject for a moment. There is a copy of this in Bowler's responses. You can't see them, but there are arrows on that plan, and they all say, write out, write out, as would the draft decision during construction.
So that's consistent, again, with feedback we heard from both the board and, and the public, that that was a strong or important consideration to maintain that write-out of, of the property, which we've agreed to. We heard some good feedback from the, the board at the last hearing about, you know, like, wanting to see breakaway signs detailed as part of any of the signage proposed on the project, stop signs and pedestrian crossing signs. So we've provided a detail there and thought that was, that was good input to incorporate into the, some of the details, so this is just the technical detail included in the plan set. We did hear concerns as to the Lot 3 driveway location and, and interest in, in trying to locate that on the cul-de-sac, so as part of the updated plans, we did move that, relocate that, that contemplated driveway location, or future driveway location, as you can see here, to the bottom portion of that, that cul-de-sac, as shown in blue here.
Quick question. Will the cul-de-sac be a one-way?
That, that is, yeah, that's, that's how it's contemplated to function, yep. A couple of the other peer review, you know, highlights just to hit on. Again, a lot of good feedback that we received from Fosse and O'Neil helped make this, I think, a, a better end product. think, a better end product and project. A lot of it was pertaining to conditions, a lot of which, as you could see in the response letter, the applicant's agreeable to. There was a nuance relative to underground utilities that we just wanted to clarify in the condition. We anticipate there might be, needed some additional overhead wires and poles by the private utility providers just to accommodate that transition, right, from the right-of-way down to underground. So we just wanted to clarify that, that there will be some limited overhead and utility pole infrastructure required just to make that transition. And again, near the cul-de-sac, we'll be transitioning back to overhead to maintain a service to the cell tower that has an easement that we are relocating as part of the project. So there will be probably an additional utility pole and maybe some just adjusted overhead wires to continue service to the cell tower at the end of that cul-de-sac and roadway. Otherwise, again, you know, I think very good conditions, well thought out, and generally agreeable as outlined. We've agreed to add the requested monitoring wells at each infiltration basin, which those have been added and are reflected on the updated plans. There was a supplemental drainage memo that was provided as part of the response. They did a thorough review of the drainage report. It really asked for a more thorough and refined analysis, basically breaking the analysis area, the analysis area up into multiple areas and design points. Ultimately, did not impact the design or really change the approach materially, but did kind of refine the analysis. So we did address that and clarify that in our memo to the satisfaction of the peer review consultant. Again, no really change, real changes or material changes to the design or calculations or treatment and other standards that were outlined in the original drainage report, but that is there for review if anyone's interested in those details. Additionally, we were asked to include the local town of Carver fire prevention system specifications, which we both included as an attachment, and we also added references to all the plans to make sure those are followed closely by the contractor. And then the last piece was with regard to the Board of Health, so we did include that email from them that basically outlined that we had satisfied their concerns and questions, and they look forward to seeing, you know, additional design and details on a project-by-project basis as projects are identified in the future. Again, wanted to keep it pretty brief with your agenda tonight, but happy to dive into any more level of detail and answer any other questions that the board may have tonight. And again, thank you for all the feedback, questions, comments throughout the process. I think, you know, it's been very helpful to hear and I think helped create a better project and product in the end. And I think the technical review committee meeting that we held early on in the process with all the town department heads, you know, really made a big difference in getting some of that feedback early and making the process go a little more smoothly. So thank you again.
Off the top of my head, all curb cuts for access to the proposed lots, we're going to require full-on crossover traffic, safety issues in regards to that. It's going to have to be clearly marked, clearly outlined, things along those lines because of the extent of traffic that's proposed at this particular site. We want to make sure everything's clear and there's no problems in regards to that. But that's going to come up as the projects are proposed. We had, Mr. Bott and I had to sit down with the DEP and MEPA. As it stands, the North Carver Water District has been closed down as of December 1st, 2023, for an indefinite period of time. It appears unlikely that any commercial projects will be added on to it. I believe because Middleborough is providing emergency water services for the town, and they're close to capacity, plus they need new growth. The DEP requested that Middleborough should be represented in all future talks in regards to public water supply. Please, go right ahead.
John, can you speak into the mic so our tape can hear you?
Yeah, there's also something recently that came out that one of the wells that Middleborough uses is having to be refurbished. And they're having to do some changes to the plant to better filter the water because they are over the allowable limit for PFAS at the well. I suppose that construction's supposed to start happening in '25.
For?
Over in Middleborough.
To do?
To update the treatment facility.
Yes.
Prepare the water.
I did read, I did read something on that. They were out of compliance and...
Yep. Recent water testing said that their, the water being pumped out was above the safety limits for drinking water.
Included in...
And if I may, just while we're talking about water and their discussion with the folks at MEPA and DEP, they had suggested that while water lines are being installed in the subdivision as required, those water lines should not connect to the North Carver Water Facility because of its, you know, because it's down and doesn't have, you know, it's not clear what its future is. So while water lines will be in the ground as part of the subdivision, the supply of water is yet to be determined, but they had recommended not to connect it to the Carver Water Plant. So at the end of the day, we'll have essentially, and Zach can probably talk about the protectors of that, a vault with a 12-inch pipe in it with a cap to be connected to something at some point in the future.
TBD.
Yep.
And speaking of which, MEPA wants further subdivision of property must receive a determination through the DEP in regards to water supplies and wastewater requirements. That was their words. They want to be notified of any, all water supply and wastewater requirements in regards to any project. And should it change from warehouse and distribution, it must receive MEPA approval.
Understood.
Those are the, those are the three big takeaways that we took from MEPA. I believe we're waiting on a letter that says that the requirements for wastewater treatment plant are not going to be required at this point, that it was based on the concept that was presented, and that their requirements will change based on the subdivision of land. 25 people or more requires public water supply is pretty much how they said it. So I don't know where that leaves us for providing water, but I expect that's going to have to be addressed on a project-by-project basis.
Correct.
I see in here, fire. It was an addendum in here in regards to Town of Carver guidelines and specifications for fire protection and distribution systems. I only had a chance to glance through it, but it seems to be specifically addressed to public water supply.
So that is the specifications that the Town of Carver Fire Department enforces, so that was asked to be included and attached and then referenced on the plans, which... Yep.
All right. We've requested an extension?
Yes, I have, in the not-to-be-lost clip that I keep, is the extension request. Dear Planning Board members, the Office Council to 44 Development, the applicant with respect to the above-referenced applications for definitive subdivision plan reviews submitted to Carver Planning Board Regulations pursuant to Chapter 41, the Town of Carver Planning Rules, Boards, Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, the applicant hereby agrees to an extension until February 13th, 2024, of the date under General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U for final action by the Planning Board on the application.
And I expect that's because we haven't heard back from MEPA at this point.
Well, we, the Commonwealth gives you 90 days to review a definitive subdivision plan if a preliminary plan has been submitted. So we've got 90 days, and as I've said before, it's not unusual for that date to be extended by mutual agreement between the board and an applicant in order to sort out whatever particular issues there are. So at this point, we've got a final review letter from Fosse and O'Neil, and we've still got a hearing, so you can hear for any other comment from the public. But we are essentially, you know, at the point where we're just about got all the facts and information we need. Much of that information I put into the draft decision that I put together for any sort of talking points that the board wants to look at or have that discussion, whether that's tonight or at the next meeting. But going through Andy's comments and those things we've talked about in-house, I've got a six-page or so draft decision with conditions and waivers in it.
All right. The road that's going to be going through, Road A and Road B, are those going to be two lanes on each side or one lane on each side?
Those are two lanes on each side.
Excellent. If they are two lanes, is there a right turn lane available for, or where the intersection of the roads?
Sorry, so there's a one lane in each direction? So it's a two-way, two-way roadways, yeah, but one lane on each, on each side? So it's consistent with the subdivision regulations for a major roadway? So they're a little wider, 300 feet, or 30 feet, sorry, curb-to-curb, I believe.
All right. It's going to cause problems with stacking up of traffic, though, and based on the numbers expected for the full development of this property. So I'm not saying now, but in the future, once development starts, if the traffic starts to reach a certain point, as we review the projects, we might be looking at adding turn lanes to prevent traffic from backing up too badly at the intersection.
Okay, yeah, we can have the traffic, you know, consultant that support that as we identify traffic trips and everything, project-by-project basis, that makes sense.
Again, we discussed putting aside a little area for bus stops in regards to cat truck. All right. I don't think I have any further questions. Any questions concerning the board? This is a public hearings act, so if you'll excuse us for a couple moments. Is there anybody from the public that has any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to this project? Seeing none, I will take a vote to extend and continue. That's my public meeting notice.
If I may, briefly, just curious what exactly the letter from MEPA that we're waiting on, if there's clarification that's needed or just to reconfirm what was discussed at the meeting?
It's just, it's to reconfirm what was discussed at the meeting in regards to that they're saying that their requirements in the final environmental impact report were based on the requirements of DHCD, and it was a conceptual project that was proposed at the time. And that will open it up and release the requirements for individual project development in regards to water and septic.
Okay, so that's something that the board feels is needed before.
Right, because they, because they put it in there as a requirement, and that was how it was addressed. You put it in there as a requirement, we need you to, because they have jurisdiction over all environmental matters in regards to this particular plant or lots, as they may be. So that's what we're waiting on.
Okay.
And then we can just, then we can move forward. Once we get that, there should be no issues or problems with us being able to move forward with this. All right. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, the board will accept a motion to continue the application of Route 44 Development in an extension in agreement with Route 44 Development 2.
January 23rd?
January 20, no.
Sorry, if I may, we have a prior commitment that date, so if we could request an extension instead to the February 13th date?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So the chair will accept a motion on the application of Route 44 Development LLC in conjunction with Route 44 Development LLC to a continuation and extension of the public hearing until...
February 13th?
February 13th, 2024, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall.
We'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Second by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatske.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Sordillo says aye.
Don Ram says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much.
Great, thank you all, have a good evening.
Next order of business is... On the applicant, it's a continued, on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 67, lot 4-3 and 4-F in the residential agricultural zoning district. The proposed scope includes the construction of six new triplex residential house, townhouses consisting of 18 total units. The applicant has requested a continuance until January 23rd, 2024.
Actually, if I may.
Please.
They have since asked for a continuance until February 27th, 2024, because they are still going through that process that we discussed about how time-consuming it is to do the public water supply.
Nice, beautiful. I didn't get the updated one. Excellent. So the board will accept a motion to continue the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC. The board will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC requesting a special site permit for 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass in the residential agricultural zoning district to February...
27.
27, 2024, 7:00 PM, Room 1, Carver Town Hall.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gatske.
Aye.
Second by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatske.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Don Ram says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. You aren't Weathervein, correct? All right, because I would have been terribly embarrassed.
We jumped the gun a little.
If you were sitting there in front of me...
Seen change, Ryan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we start the public hea, the hearing on the Elks, I'm a resident South Meadow Village... Village, and I'm not sure whether we abut the airport or may or may not. And as a result, I'd like to just recuse myself and allow the associate member to take my place rather than have to worry about or deal with any issue.
Thank you very much.
All right, just.
Please, Mr. Bott.
So this is a site plan review and not a special permit. So while Bill is more than willing to help out and comment on things, the associate members eligible only to vote on special permits. So if Don recusing himself, we're at a simple majority, three out of four people.
Is South Meadow Village owned as a condominium association with private, or is it individual lots?
Uh, it's a little neither. It's a community-owned.
It's community-owned, so.
So I own 1/520th of 360 acres. And they have 758 acres, and I'm not sure if they cross paths or touch.
Right, right.
So I have a 1/520th financial interest in South Meadow Village.
As part owner of the village, yes.
I had no idea you're such a land baron.
Oh, I know. As I said, rather than worry about something down the road.
All right, gentlemen, if you could give us your names and give us a little rundown on, oh, wait.
Oh, yeah.
One moment.
I interrupted you before you started.
No, that's okay. Our next order of business is a public hearing notice on the application of Plymouth Elks Lodge Number 1476 requesting a site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 169 South Meadow Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 113, Lot 70E portion of, in the airport zoning district. Applicant proposes to construction a 25, 2,520 square foot building with all associated parking, driveways, stormwater management, utilities, landscaping, and opportunists. Now, gentlemen.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Paul Roginsky, I'm Chair of the Building Committee for the Plymouth Lodge of Elks Number 1476.
And good evening, my name is Robert DeWar here. For Bracket Engineering, we are representing the Plymouth Elks in this project. Just first things right off the bat, the project is currently still being peer-reviewed by Fuss and O'Neil, so regardless, we will be continuing the hearing tonight, but we want to just at least open it and give a general rundown of the proposal. So just to start here, we do have a parcel. This is a, going to be a leased area on the Plymouth Airport property. It's approximately 53,800 square feet. It's on approximately the southeast side of South Meadow Road. You can see the aerial as shown above. So existing right now, there's nothing on the lot, it's, it's a vacant piece of the airport property. There's a bit of a gravel pull-off there, but that's about it. It's been used in the past for some dumping, there's some hummocky fill piles and everything. Other than that, it's comprised mainly of scrub pines, and that's about it. But this is all upland area, there's no wetlands, no MISA endangered species areas anywhere within the vicinity. And we do benefit from having a fair amount of utility infrastructure already on-site because of the airport, so. That, here's some pictures of the existing site, you can see what I was talking about, it's largely some scrub pines. As you get over to sort of the southwestern side, it's a little more vegetated with some more hardwood species, but generally it's grass, scrub, and that's about it. So here we are proposing, as was stated, approximately 2,500 square foot building. This is be located in the front. We met previously at the end of October with a preliminary presentation in front of this board in which it was advised that we relocate the parking to the rear of the building as to better comply with the Carver bylaws. We have done that, so we have a proposed 35 spaces located at the rear of the building. This includes also four spaces designated with electric vehicle charging stations as well. We also have a screened dumpster area that is at the end of the driveway pull-in. This will be fenced and screened so as not to be visible from the road. And, let me see if I can get my cursor over there, there we go. The dumpster area is down here, so here's approximately the building location. There is landscaping around all the public entrance sides of the building. Up here, we have one of the rain gardens and stormwater infiltration areas to handle this parking lot, this southeastern parking lot, or southwestern parking lot, excuse me, is handled by another stormwater management area down here. Just going towards sort of a landscape plan. The bulk of the area is, is proposed to just be seeded, seeded, loamed, it would be grass. There are proposed street trees on the front, six proposed street trees that will be planted to provide some screening from the road. If I can do it without changing a slide, these trees are located right up here, so. Coming down, just, just a couple elevation views. Because the parking is located in the rear, this is sort of the rear of the building as kind of the front entrance. What you see from the street is this side of the elevation view. We actually have just received today, and I will send those over once we have the, our next revised submission, just some updated elevation views that I'll show right here. All that does is just shows a little bit of screening that we have. There will be the AC condenser units in the front, but there will be some shrub screening there, so they won't be visible from the road. From utilities and stormwater standpoint, again, much of the infrastructure is already in place on the lot because, because of the airport. Sewer and wastewater will be treated on-site at the Plymouth Airport. We're not proposing a on-site septic here. This will be included within the storm wastewater treatment at the airport. Water, again, comes off of the airport water line, and that was both domestic and fire service. The building will be sprinkled, sprinklered. The only utility going out into South Meadow Road would be a proposed gas line, so that there is a gas line out there that we'll be connecting to. Stormwater, again, much of the water for the larger parking lot, all of that ends up on the northeastern side of the lot. There's a rain garden, sediment for bay, and subsurface infiltration. We have the same setup to handle the water from the southwestern portion of the parking lot. Roof runoff will also be infiltrated below subsurface as well. All the stormwater has been designed to treat and store up to a 100-year storm as well as all the water quality issues. Because there is a prep kitchen in place, we are, there will be a external grease trap as well prior to exiting to the Plymouth Airport sewer system. That will be coordinated with the Plymouth Board of Health as well.
Where will that be located?
That is in the, sort of the front of the building right here. And all you'll see from that, it will be like a septic tank, you'll just, there'll just be a couple of covers at grade, just so it can be accessed and pumped out. We have requested a waiver for a formal traffic study just because of the nature of the Elks Club here. It's a very generally low volume use for the lot in terms of traffic. And so we have, yeah, we have requested a waiver for that. No special permits are requested at this time, and I think with that, I'd like to open it up for any preliminary questions or comments that the Board may have.
Sure, we'll, we'll look to what Andy says in regards to site setbacks. I'm not overly concerned about the airport or to the rear. On the southwest side, though, our engineer might, might be coming back and having to request a waiver in regards to that because you're over so many spaces, once you're over so many spaces, they require an extra foot in regards to screening.
Mm-hmm.
What is this property on the southwest side? Is that residential? Is it airport-owned?
It's still zoned from, from, in the airport district. Right now, it's, it's essentially vacant, I believe, I can go back a little.
I, I happen to be, because it's such a, changing pages is difficult.
Yeah, it's directly next to us, it's, it's still airport-owned, there's really nothing there. As you go below, beyond that, you get into some of the hangers.
I'm just kind of curious. How many people can actually go into, and what's the occupancy?
We have 72 seats total between sort of banquet room and, and then like a bar area.
Grill room. So the runoff is private, you said you have 35 spaces to pack?
Yeah, that's just to provide excess spaces in case of any events. It also allows spaces for potential staff members if they're staffing for an event there.
I'm gonna give you a little warning about what's potentially coming from our engineers in regards to, I believe it's listed as the west side or the street side of the building's gonna need 15% windows. It's also because of the length of the building, it's gonna require bump outs and changes in, so it's not just a, a flat commercial-looking wall. The parking area should be better screened, it shouldn't be visible from the road, so I'd recommend adding some sort of screening between, either between or behind the street trees to block that from the street.
Sure. We do have a landscape bed along that side of the parking lot, on the street side of the parking lot in terms of plantings to be planted there, we're still coordinating that, so that we can provide additional screening there.
We spoke about it earlier, I wanted our engineer to check, to check on the entrance as it's directly opposite fairway lane. If he gives it the okay, it's okay, we're gonna want a vermin control plan because you're gonna be serving food, there's gonna be a lot of people there. You should also have trash barrels outside for your seating area and make sure that they're resistant to infiltration by raccoons and everything else. Height of your lighting? And will it be?
Height of the lighting, sorry, even on the plan, I think it was.
Dark sky compliant.
I believe it is dark sky compliant, and there's LED. Light poles are approximately 25 feet in height.
25 feet?
25.
Okay. I'm not sure what's allowed, so.
25.
I know it's allowed in the commercial industrial areas, but I, I didn't, wasn't sure where it was other than that.
We'll check.
Those are all my concerns. We did receive a public comment letter, I believe you provided a little copy, I just...
From Mr. Young?
Yes.
From Mr. Young?
Yes, Mr. Young. You've provided building elevations.
I think he was also concerned with the dumpster.
Dumpster, so we're gonna wanna make sure that's appropriately screened. You answered the question in regards to irrigation will be served through the airport?
Yep.
Through the town, yes.
And the plan shows outdoor usable area, it's gonna be, it's, it's marked as lawn, so it's a permeable surface, and that's kind of how we'd like to keep it. I mean, not to say you can't add a little stone pathway, you know, various other things, but. And I think that addresses all his concerns. All right, are there questions from the Board?
Sure, Mr. Gatske.
This runs through Carver? Is that why you're here with the Carver Planning Board? How much of it is?
Correct. If you look at sort of the north, northeastern side of the parcel, you see kind of a diagonal line that's running and cuts off the corner there, right next to the parking lot.
Can you show me on the cursor?
Yeah. Got it, yeah, so that is the Plymouth, if I can find my cursor, this is the Plymouth-Carver Town Line right here. So this little triangle lies within Plymouth, but all the development of the parcel, with the exception of a little bit of landscaping here, is occurring within Carver.
Okay, and this is the Plymouth Elks as the Town of Plymouth, or is it called Plymouth Elks?
Incorporated only, that's the name of our corporation.
So it isn't necessarily the Town of Plymouth Elks?
No, just for, you know, governmental, not governmental, but, you know, for the state, and we have to have a corporation, so it's been the Plymouth Lodge of Elks for 100 years now. It could be the Plymouth-Carver Lodge of Elks at some point, so.
I'm, yeah, I think it would be good for the public to know that as well.
All right, and you can, can you repeat your name again for our note taker, please?
Uh, my name is Paul Roginsky, Building Chair for the Plymouth Lodge of Elks.
It's just been a while, so, thank you.
And as the Chair mentioned, we're trying to make sure that the buildings don't look like just big metal boxes, so some architectural rendings, renderings added to the building to, you know, break that box look up would be really nice. I, I think when you brought up the pictures of the building, were those canopy awnings or are those just shutters, the black where the windows are?
Uh, those are, I think that's just how the PDF rendered, those are just windows, there's really no canopies over them or anything, they just, yeah.
So, yeah, it would be really, really good for you to take that into consideration as far as the building is concerned, to, you know, try to spruce it up a little bit from looking like a box. That's what I had to ask and say. Further questions or concerns from the Board?
I have questions.
Well, you can't ask questions.
I can't, no, I'm teasing you.
You can ask questions from the Board.
Liquor license, do you, is one?
You have to go up there.
Is one available from Carver? Do you even know?
We had checked in with the Carver Town Hall probably two years ago before we even started doing this, and they said that a liquor license would not be an issue.
Like as a private club or?
Yes, private club.
But for events, you would, you need, I don't know, it's, you know, if somebody rents the hall, you'd be under your license still or?
Correct.
Maybe you have a sign inside saying entering, and entering car.
Police come, run to the other side.
As you know, the amount of insurance we have to carry to do something like this is, is crazy, so our grand, our uppers are watching us very closely, so.
All right, any further questions from the Board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so if you will excuse us for a moment, we'll invite the public out. Is there anybody here who has any questions or concerns in regards to this project? If you could identify yourself.
Ken Foss, the Chairman of the Airport Commission. I would just say that the Elks have been very cooperative and consistent all the way along, and our questions have been consistent with your questions about the look of the building and how it, it reflects. We do have a lot of big metal boxes in the inner portion of the airport, but we have requested and demand that, that the buildings along South Meadow have that kind of better look, so we're very much in favor. we're very much in favor of the project.
Now, okay, can, can you speak in regards to the ownership of the property abutting? This property? In other words, if we were to allow waivers in regards to setbacks and screening to the airport side of the property, is this problematic or an issue to you?
I don't believe it would be an issue.
Okay.
We own the property, but it's all, it's all the airport's property.
Absolutely. But we said, we should still ask that.
Absolutely. Yep.
If, if this is something that comes up, we, we would like to end it, not to force you to come back or anything, although we like to see you as often as possible here.
I, I understand. And, you know, we, we're more than glad to come back. And, and I think that your requests are consistent with ours, so I don't see any difficulty with it.
I think they came and had a discussion with us a couple of months back, and they've made vast improvements to what was, what was proposed before. So thank you very much for your time tonight. No further questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, then, the chair will accept a motion to, when is Andy looking, oh, yeah, when is Andy looking to have something ready for?
I don't have an answer for that, but I would venture to say, let's continue it to January 23rd. And if for some reason we don't have something to talk about, we'll just continue it beyond that.
All right.
Did you want to do a sidewalk there?
Sure. Absolutely. I think tomorrow morning's out of the question, so. We have another big storm coming in Wednesday, Saturday, Friday night? It's Friday, Saturday?
Sort of thought it started tonight, but in any event.
I think next, next, early next week is when they're anticipating some more snow.
It's like back to back to back.
Well, let's, let's see about continuing the public hearing, and then we'll discuss the sidewalk. The chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Plymouth Elks Lodge 1476, requesting a site plan review for property located at 169 South Meadow Road in Carver in the airport zoning district for the construction of a 2,520 square foot building and associated parking driveways, storm water management, utilities, landscaping, and opportunances. The continuation to January 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
Second.
The second by Ms. Sardillo. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Very much.
We look forward to this.
So before Rob gets too far away, so if we're talking about a sidewalk, it'd be great to have something out there to look at. So some stakes. What are the prospects for getting corners of the building, driveway, center line, and those sort of things staked for?
Absolutely. I can't, with tomorrow's weather, can't, can't promise that for Friday.
No, I was only kidding about getting it done that fast.
But, yeah, give us, early next week, we can certainly have a stake Monday, Tuesday. Weather dependent.
So today is the ninth, so we're talking about a potential site visit the week of January 15th. MLK is Monday.
So, yeah, the corners of the building, the entrance, down to the turn of where the proposed parking's going to be. I would like to see how far back from the road it is myself.
Where was this previously? Was it further on South Meadow?
Sorry, sorry about that. No, we're at 52 Long Pond Road off, that is a five. Now it's a Salvation Army.
Good day and time for anybody here specifically? You're, you're a tough one. It's tough to get you into daylight hours because of the work. I did see one of your trucks driving around the other way.
Tues, yeah, all right. Figure this out because I got, I have something that I need to schedule. I haven't scheduled yet, so I can look there wrongs.
Ellen, I got them. Thursday at 1:00?
That's, yep.
Thursday, January 18th?
Sure. That's a, yeah, roughly, yeah, nine, six, yep, 18. Thursday, January 18th at 1:00, if it's good with everybody.
I won't be able to make it by the other one.
Is this the only time? Can you do it earlier? Like 10:00?
Yeah, 9:30. What time are you going?
I could do 9:30.
Done.
Because I, I have, actually have a client at 10:00 at South Meadow Village.
Perfect. 9, 9:30, Mr. Bot?
9:30 is fine with me.
All right.
All right, side visit 11824, 9:30 AM.
And that's okay with you gentlemen?
It works for me.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, we appreciate you coming in. All right. Order of business is the final surety release for Lindby's Path.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So Lindby's Path has been completed. All inspections have been done, confirmed by our consulting engineer as well as our DPW folk. At this point, the applicant has requested the release of their surety, and with a vote of the board and your signatures, we'll be able to get that done and turn these funds back over to Mrs. Cash or Ms. Cash. As you may know, she, she got into the development business through the, the death of her fiance. So she's been trying to close up the books on this for a while. The estate is now closed, so this is just closing up the last bit of this business for, for her. So everything is in order, and all we need is a vote of the board to authorize release of the bond. It's $2,000.
It was checked out by the town engineer?
Correct.
And we have any, the only thing I have is here July 26, 22, and I think we lowered the surety down to $2,200?
Well, actually, there wasn't any surety. The surety for the development was a lot.
Yes.
And this is what, an old-school thing that we don't do. So we had to create a surety in order to release that last lot, so she can build a house on it. So, yes, we do not do lots for surety. That's not one of the parameters under Massachusetts general law. So, yes, Andy has had his comments, has answered. John Wood, our DPW, our operation maintenance deputy director, has assured us that things are fine with him, so it's all set to go.
All right.
The property that was open space has been conveyed, and I don't think there was anything else that was outstanding at one point.
And was, and, right, because I might be remembering, this was a conservation subdivision?
Correct.
And we had concerns in regards to accessing the conservation.
So all that's been conveyed to the Conservation Commission, I believe.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. So we need to take a vote on this. The chair will accept a motion to release the final surety for the Lindby's Path Conservation Subdivision located at?
Off of High Street.
Off High Street.
Yeah, I think the road is, I think the-
On Lindby's Path. Do I have, thank you. Ms. Sardillo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gatski. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Do we have a copy of the open meeting log complaint?
You would sign that, pass it down. Were you, you decided to, to be there?
The public note?
Yeah.
All right. And that will be on, on that one, correct?
Correct.
Yep. It's, it's been so long, I-
Give me a second.
I don't recall the procedures for handling this, but-
Yeah, so our, the, the board's motion is to authorize Town Council to draft a response to the open meeting log complaint on behalf of the planning board. That has been the board's standard motion.
And?
As previously discussed when we did these when I first got here, it's not necessary to read the complaint or discuss it, but if you like, I can bring it up and, and let you know what it was.
That's, yeah, please. John, John doesn't seem to know about it. It was, yeah.
You only have one copy we have to sign, Tom?
Correct.
It basically said that we did not post the date on which we posted our meeting agenda.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, we're not gonna-
Fair enough. It's, it's an open meeting log complaint, and, and people have the right to file it. It is on, it is posted on the webpage, the date that it was posted, the agenda was posted, so. The chair will accept a motion to authorize Town Council to draft a response to the open meeting log complaint on behalf of the planning board.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gatski. Do we have further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Tom, planner notes?
All righty. So we have the warrant closed for town meeting last week, and we are in the midst of waiting to see what other petition articles there might be. There are a couple of articles regarding moving our zoning bylaw into a digital format, which requires some renumbering. So there's a town meeting article to authorize renumbering parts of the zoning bylaw in order to put them into the form for town code. I think there are two of those that the town clerk had forwarded for inclusion on the warrant. There was a placeholder that you had talked about for extending the frontage of roads?
The frontage of residential lots is, is outlined in the, in the master plan to 200 feet and, off the top of my head.
So, so that's my, that's my homework for you, because I looked for that, and I couldn't find a reference to it.
Okay, I, I'll pull that up. But, yeah, they, they reference that one, one of the important parts and the importance of it is to push towards conservation and clustered subdivisions and, and try and get away from the, the sprawl, plus the, the added environmental benefits in regards to. But I'll, I'll take care of that.
Yeah, I, I, I read it a couple of times, looking for some specific reference to that.
I'll get that.
But couldn't, couldn't come across that. So with that in mind, we are looking at opening the hearings for those town meeting articles on February 13th. I have to receive them from the select board and then process them, create an ad for it, but we're on path to get that done all for February 13th.
The other one was to bring the stipend of the board up to what it was previously, minus $100 to, I'm sorry, to your way, Don. It's, but for our stipend, for our alternate member.
I have questions about that. Part of the time I was unpaid associate, then I was an associate, and now am I a full member?
You are.
I was not voted elected. I was appointed.
You, you were going to get that huge, big money that everybody who sits up here gets, which is not huge, big money for the view of the-
Because it says elected officials, I was a-
Yeah, you're, you're, it's for, it's for the sitting members of the planning board. There's a difference.
Is it calendar year, fiscal year, town meeting to town meeting?
I believe it's at the end of your term.
No, it's at the beginning.
No, you, I'm pretty, well, Mr. Young had some issues with getting his, and I think it was because you have to serve your term before you get paid for it. But, again, I'm not entirely certain.
Oh, I've been here forever, so. I thought I'd get paid right at the beginning of the new fiscal year. Maybe not.
Seems like I get mine right after town meeting.
Right, right, yeah, because I, I served the full, full year before I got my first check.
Because everything, everything, I think the budget has to be approved at town meeting, and then we get paid.
Prorated it three months at $200, and how many days it-
I don't know. It might be the full check because the last member didn't complete his-
Listen, you might be on microphones, okay?
I want to hit a large coffee. You're going to know.
The last member didn't complete his term, so it might be forwarded on.
Well, I don't, it's-
I'm not sure.
He's prorated, he should have gotten partial, I don't know. How do you?
Right. I don't know.
How you do things here? This is small-town politics.
Yeah, I don't, I don't do math, but I do know that Georgia Tech alma mater did retire Jason Veritek's number because he graduated. They did not retire my other classmate, Nomar Garcia-Paras' number, because he did not graduate. So you have to complete your term to get your stuff, at least in Georgia check.
He did not graduate?
Huh?
He did not graduate?
He did not graduate. He took big money to play baseball and date me and him, apparently, rather than hang out with me in Atlanta. Not that I ever saw him on campus, but we were in school at the same time.
Probably financially the right decision, so.
Well, he could have got a gig like this, man. Come on. Come on.
He won the World Series at least once, right?
No, he traded them before they won the World Series.
Oh. Did he not get a ring? Oh. He's a great player.
Would have not liked the pitch clock.
All right. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes for November 14, 2023. The chair will accept the motion to approve said minutes.
I will make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robertson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sardillo. Further discussion?
It's Robinson for those.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Just in case she's writing down my name wrong and you don't want it to-
And I will have to correct it when it comes back.
That's all, that's all, not necessarily correcting you.
Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Motion to approve the amended minutes for 11/28/2023.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gatski. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. I think that, that covers everybody. Just as a public service, make sure your dryer vents get cleaned on an annual basis. Almost had a particularly bad tragedy in regards to mine from not having been cleaned in an appropriate length of time. So for anybody out there listening, it is an exceptional fire hazard. It should be checked and cleaned on a regular basis. So the chair will accept a motion to adjourn.
I will be having a make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Nope.
Oh.
Will you second?
Oh, yes, second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, and have a pleasant and safe evening.